Tom, have you, okay, look, I can see the, I can see the toolbar indicates that we've begun recording.
Correct.
All right, very good. So this is Bob McIntosh, Chairman of the Morris Planning and Zoning Commission, calling to order a continuation of a public hearing. It's April 15th, 2020. Call this meeting to order at 7:06. I'm gonna run through the, the attendance. We have Dell Knox, Robert Whipple, Robert McIntosh, David Wig, Robert Paritas, Kevin Curley. As far as members, are there any other members?
How are you doing?
That's not me, by the way.
For the record, First Selectman Tom White is on the call, and Eileen Narbutis and David Jeremiah are also showing up in the list here. If I've overlooked anybody participating, I apologize. You don't need to identify yourself if you're, you know, not a member, but welcome to the meeting. As we all know, the hearing was to review our updates to the Morris Planning and Zoning Regulations. We opened this hearing some time ago, and in the hearing, there generally, well, there were no attendees other than members, except for an applicant that was there to submit something in the regular meeting that evening. And that person happened to be an engineer that submitted applications frequently. He had a question regarding the LISD regulation. And I reached out to Karen Nelson, who is in touch with Steve Trinkus. Steve Trinkus, for those that don't know, are, is the engineer who drafted and presented the LISD manual back in 2017 and into 18, I believe. So the question was, does the application and site plan have to utilize the methods and standards that are in the document? And his concern was that as technology evolves, that a new idea or design would be precluded because it wasn't specifically identified in the manual. I did not hear back from Karen, but I did my own review. And what the language of the document says is that the strategies identified in Section 4, pardon me, the strategies identified in Section 3 are those that have to be, that are mandated to be utilized. It doesn't specify a specific product or method. It just defines the goal of the manual. So there is a list of goals, and any goals that are pertinent to that type of development are the ones that have to be achieved. So that was, it was pretty clearly defined in the manual itself. It does not show that in the regulation, but the regulations refer to the design manual. And as I just mentioned, the design manual doesn't specifically identify a specific product, pipe, or design. It just identifies goals and strategies to achieve. So I personally don't feel that there's any risk that a new technology or a better way or a better design in the future would be precluded from being adopted. It would just have to be reviewed by our design engineer and approved by the commission after such a review is, is, I guess, commented on by the design engineer that we select at that time. It's the best answer to the question that I was able to get. I'm very confident that no one would design a manual that would preclude any new technology to achieve the same results. But it is pretty specific in the language of the manual that the strategy is what the, what the mandate is, not a particular design or product. Does anybody have any questions as to what I found in my review of that concern? All right. So as I said, there were no other concerns. I guess I'll just make a quick synopsis of what the updates were to the regulations, in case there is a participant in the meeting that isn't sure what it is that we are adopting. Just for the record, this particular document is available on the town's website. It was identified by the clerk and uploaded specifically for this hearing in an electronic format, so, and I did verify that today. So they will just do a quick, so as you know, we are updating our sign regulations, which we spent quite a bit of time on for last, on that topic last year. Several additions to the sign regulations there, including the new temporary roadside signage that we will be permitting in specific zones. The other major update would be the necessary language in the regulations themselves to adopt our low-impact sustainable design manual. It is not any specific section that has been added. It has just been lines in a number of sections that provide us the necessary regulatory language to incorporate that design manual and enforce it. And those are the two major revisions to the document. There were some minor edits where we found, you know, just broken language and other So I gotta turn it over to any commissioner that might want to add anything related to the hearing for adopting our revised regulations. No particular orders. Does any commissioner want to add anything?
This is David.
Yeah, I'm ready to go on them.
Okay, so we would, Kevin, I would.
I understand when the public hearing's closed, but as far as handling, I think that we've discussed them quite a bit, so I'm very comfortable with them.
Very good. David, you were, you were about to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that I didn't remember whether you had mentioned it or not, that we did button up the self-storage regulations.
That is correct, and that was important. Yeah, that was an important omission in our 2013 update. That's, thank you very much for bringing that up, David. That was another major concern for us. Anything else? I'm just gonna call it one more time, just because of the circumstances. Does anyone want to add anything else to the hearing? If not, if it pleases the commission, I'm gonna close it.
Close the line.
Go right ahead.
All right. I haven't heard anything from any of the participants, so I'm gonna call this hearing closed at 7:14. All right. Thank you very much. Tom, are you still with us?
Yep.
I guess because it was one meeting a number for both sections of tonight's activities, I don't, I don't think we need to shut the recording off and restart it. We would just roll into our regular meeting. Are you comfortable with that?
Yep, that works.
Very good.
Just one thing, if someone makes a motion and someone seconds it, they need to really state their name first before they make it, just because of the recording, and then you also have people on telephones too, so they know who's making the motion, who's seconding it. And if the vote is not unanimous, do a roll call.
Very good. I'll make sure we do the roll call and record that, Tom, so that if there's any questions, we can answer them.
Okay.
All right, so this is Robert McIntosh, Chairman of the Morris Planning and Zoning Commission, calling to order our regular meeting. It is a special meeting, apologize, this is a special meeting. I'll call this for April 15th, 2020, at 7:15. I am gonna go through the attendance. If someone has joined us that I do not name, please speak up when I finish the roll call. Robert McIntosh is present, present. Dell Knox is present. Robert Whipple is present. Kevin Curley is present. David Wig is present. Robert Paritas is present. Are there any other members present on the call? Okay, and for the record, we also have David Jeremiah Jr., Eileen Narbutis, and our First Selectman Tom White, at least for the time being, Tom's gonna, gonna hang in with us. All right. Call. Item number two on the agenda is agenda review. As this is a special meeting, we will not be able to add any items to this agenda, so we're just gonna move forward on to new business. There is no new business item identified. So moving on to item four, old business.
Hey, Bob, I have one quick question.
Fire away.
Yeah, so on the agenda online, it lists all of our, our members, and there's a few names missing, and I understand that we haven't met in a bit because of everything going on, but there's a few names missing. Is the agenda accurate for all of our members, or is there an inaccuracy there?
So Tony, do you wanna, would you wanna comment on that? And for the record, Tony Adili, our zoning enforcement officer, is also on the call, and I regret omitting him from the roll call on our public hearing. I will create minutes to reflect that he was in attendance for both meetings. Tony, can you speak to the membership?
Yeah, I think it's accurate, 100% accurate, because we had three resignations in the time being, and no new members.
Who is missing?
What was that?
Is Kevin no longer an alternate?
No, no, he resigned.
Okay.
So Kevin and Lisa resigned recently, very recently.
Yeah, and then Nancy a little while back, so.
Okay, so it sounds like we have some, some work to do to fill some of these spots.
Oh, yeah.
Got some holes to fill, and I believe some former members are in attendance on the call to express their interest, but we'll get to that a little further in the meeting.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Kevin, for that question, definitely a good question. I was aware of the resignations, but wasn't sure if there was a glitch somewhere, so I'm glad you brought it up to make it very clear. So item 4A under old business is regulation review, and it does say the document will be uploaded on the Town of Morris website, and that document is present there, so it certainly is something we can act on in the evening. That hearing is the one that we just closed. So are there any questions or any comments that anyone on the call would like to make regarding the updated zoning regulations of the Town of Morris?
I, I think that there's not much to ask at this point. This is David Wig. I would like to move to adopt the changes in the updated regulations that we have presented.
All right, David Wig, motion to adopt the regulations as presented. Do we have a second to David's motion?
I'll second that, Bob Paritas.
Bob, thank you very much. I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, and I think I'll just go down name by name, and you can do the ayes or nays, does that sound okay?
Hey, Bob, this is Dave Jeremiah. Is there a way we can get, I get a copy of those?
Certainly, the, the updated regs?
Yeah, because I don't, I don't know what the new ones were, yeah.
Yeah, they are available as a draft on the website, but they'll be, they'll be uploaded very soon as, as our, you know, adopted regulations with a effective date, so.
Okay.
Any other questions before I call? All right, Dave Wig, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob Paritas?
Aye.
Rob Whipple?
Aye.
Kevin Curley?
Aye.
Yeah, I think that's everybody but me, right? That's right. All right, did I miss anybody that might have joined? All right, that's all the memberships, it is, the membership that is unanimous, so there, there are no votes against and no abstentions, so the regulations have been adopted as revised. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item 4B, Plan of Conservation and Development, otherwise known as the POCAD. Document will be provided on the Town of Morris website. So Tony, this document I was not able to find, so I don't know what the status, if, I know we have a draft from Veronica, and I know that we have some draft work from Bob Paritas, but I don't know if this material, I don't expect it was incorporated into a draft of the POCAD and provided to the clerk, is that, is that accurate?
Let me see.
I also provided some input, too. It's not complete.
Actually, Bob, if you go on the town website, under, I don't know if you're there, but if you go there, I do have the draft, maybe, not a draft, but it's just all our, all our ideas copied onto one document.
I'm just gonna double check, Tony, and, and not that I don't trust you, but.
If you go into its agenda on April 13th, there, sorry, April 8th, there's two different files, the regulation review, and it looks like Tony compiled people's notes on the POCAD and have the town clerk put that up on April 8th.
Good, and Kevin, I do see that now that you've described it. I didn't realize there was, okay, so the other document that I found was in a different location, so now I'm comfortable that we can actually speak to these drafts. Just trying to be extra careful given the, the electronic meeting format that we're using here, so we just don't get jammed up, that's all. Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Tony, for directing me to the right location. Just a couple notes I meant to say at the beginning of this regular meeting. I think we should all assume that we're gonna be utilizing this format until at least our first meeting in June, that's what I anticipate anyway. So if those of us that are on, on just the call would like to see video, you might want to look at Zoom options and technology before our next meeting, it might be a more comfortable meeting process for you. Let's see here, okay, the documents, yep, okay, that's all I, that's all I wanted. The other item was the availability of the documents that we're gonna be reviewing tonight, so I think we are all set. So who would like to begin? Unfortunately, Veronica wasn't able to join us this night, this evening, and she had presented to Tony recently a comprehensive piece of work that she'd been hammering away at, so that, that's unfortunate, but I believe she still doesn't have any internet at her home after the storm on Monday. David, I think I'm less familiar with your contributions, so do you wanna, do you wanna start and talk about what you've, you've provided to Tony?
Yes, just give me a minute to bring up my piece.
Tom or Bob, if you make me, allow me to share my screen, I can just put it up for you guys to look at as well.
Glad.
Manage participants. Tony, you're shown as a co-host already.
Yeah, but it didn't let me until someone let me do it, so now.
Maybe Tom did it, as, as that, he beat me to it.
Yeah, so now I can share the screen, I think, is it up?
Yeah, it is. I can see it, yes.
Okay, so this is Dave's section right here, I think it starts right here, 5A, implement appropriate architectural standards, so.
Yes, because basically, what I felt was very important, and I think those, if, those meetings with, regarding Dollar General and what happened surrounding that, kind of bore out the, actually, I got a later version than this, somehow, maybe I sent you the wrong thing.
No, no, scroll up a little more, you have a little more there, actually, I just, I've.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I've got some things in here that, you know, I felt that needed to be discussed, I mean, we can whittle things down as needed over time, but I felt that we need to consider what the town centers are and make sure that, you know, we have an orderly development, and we have, you know, the proper structure, and we think of some of the things that might happen in town and, and such. And I kind of started with a summary of Morris and what exists there. I added Lower Route 63, because we don't usually think about that, I don't have a better name for that, maybe somebody can come up with that, because we do have several commercial properties and in that zone that are, you know, somewhat active. And, you know, I don't think we should forget about that. I didn't put the Orel property, that's the old Orel property, that's in, in R1, actually, that's, no, actually, that really doesn't, I strike that, that, I'm not thinking right there. And I also, the other thing I thought that we don't usually think of, and it's not even marked as commercial, is Lakeside, however, their pre-existing non-conforming uses, that I think there is at least one pre-existing non-conforming use, which is the post office that I don't think has been abandoned, and such, and I do think there are people who have sentimental, there's a sentimental look upon Lakeside as being a town center, so I wasn't sure whether we want to totally ignore that, and therefore, that's why that was added. But, you know, those are the, the areas that I, I consider town centers, and it's up to everybody to decide, and/or present it to the town, get their feedback on how we want to structure that. And then I, then I came up with basically three things that I think we need to do as, as you scroll down through there, but if people want to take, if people are still reading, I, we don't, I don't want to rush people through it.
Hello, can anybody hear me?
Oh, is that Veronica?
Hey! Oh my God, I did it!
I know you. You made it, Veronica.
Oh my God, I hope you guys can't see me, because I didn't bother to put makeup on.
We can see you.
Oh, great.
You're beautiful, don't worry.
Yeah, we didn't have power for two days, it was joyous, I'm exhausted.
Well, I, I take that you've received internet service to your house, that means everything's fixed.
I have not, I'm doing this with Verizon, because the, I give EverSource an A, and Cable Vision and Optimum get a D, because they came in the middle of the night and put the wire up on the pole, but they never came and connected the wire to my house that's on the ground. They sent me a text this afternoon that my service was all set, and I'm like, uh, no.
Well, sorry to hear you're struggling with that, but we're glad to see you for sure.
Problem, so what did I miss?
So just give you a quick update, we, we did close the hearing for the update to the regulations, and we just opened our regular meeting, we did the roll call, and then we did go ahead and vote to adopt the amended regulations that we opened the hearing on, you know, late, I think it was, late last year, I believe it was. And then we began the individual presentations of the sections of the POCAD that each member's working on, it was our first, and he just, really just got started, so.
Okay.
Besides the adoption of the regulations, you haven't really missed much.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
You might want to scroll up so she sees that, the three bullet points. I just, I did define three town centers, I mean, five town centers, adding two things that we don't normally think of as town centers, Lakeside, and that commercial zone on the lower end of Route 61.
Okay.
And, you know, we can debate three and four on that list, I don't think anybody argues the other two.
Okay.
But I think they should be talked about and being considered and remembered as potential desired town centers as the town, you know, plans its potential growth and But then, and like, wrap up this little section, when you get down to the bottom, once everybody's through what we have written here, what I have written here, I should say. No. What's that? So if we, is everybody read through this section?
Yes, I'm comfortable, I actually have a hard copy here, David, I just, it was incorporated into a larger document, so I, I just wasn't aware of what your section that you'd worked on was, so I'm, I'm clear on that now.
Yeah, I wasn't giving that, I went in my, and I'm like, oh, damn it.
But as we get to the bottom of it, you'll eventually see some.
Hey, just let me know when you guys want me to scroll down.
All right, hang on.
Okay, you guys read all those?
Yep, and then I go into a little more detail on 5A and 5B, and I still have to finish off the detail on 5C, but that's a lot more self-explanatory than some of the other stuff. But I still think that there, we should review the uses and, and maybe even update some of the terminology in there, and I will get into that in the, the 5C section. And some of this needs to be integrated with what Bob is doing, not trying to step on his toes, but I just think that, you know.
They go hand in hand, David.
Yeah, exactly, but I just think that we need to think about the town centers and somehow incorporate, because I still feel very strongly about coming up with something with 5A. I think LISD gives us maybe a blueprint for what we're looking to do here, if we can get some kind of a similar document put together, or find somebody who has something that we can modify to make work for us.
Okay, I'm ready.
I just need the data that town center studied. I just need the data that Town Center studied. And section X is Kevin's section.
Yep.
Not knowing where that is, but.
Okay.
And that's really it. I have not expanded five C. But I, I will take a few minutes over the next couple of days and put that together so we can complete that.
Thank, thank you, David, for, um, for that work. The page one of this document, Tony, uh, it's got a, a small header of new plan of development and the first bold type was the goals for affordable housing. And who, who worked, who, who did the first page?
The first page is the, um, table of contents, right? Technically, I mean.
Oh, well, let's see here.
Yeah, scroll up all the way.
Who, who has control of that document? You, Tony?
Yes, I'm using it right now. Can you see what I'm showing everyone or?
Yeah, so scroll down.
Yep.
So, uh, okay, so I, I, I don't have that complete document, so I beg your pardon.
Okay. Yeah, if you go on the town websites, they're both, I mean, we can go from, we can go to the.
Numbered a little differently as well, but that's all right. So you're at the, you're at the page that I.
Yeah.
I have as, as page one. And whose section is this?
I actually did this section.
This is yours. Nice, Tony.
Oh, I thought Kevin Jerome was doing the housing one.
He's not a member anymore, so I have to do it.
Oh, okay.
He, he ran away on us.
He did. Hey, Eileen coming? Is Eileen coming back? She told me she was interested.
So, uh.
She's on the call.
Yeah, she's on the call and so is David Jeremiah, Jr. Uh, so we do have some interested folks in, uh, filling some vacancies. Uh, and that item is a little further down on the agenda, uh.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so Tony, the reason I, I, I brought up this particular page was, uh, it was on my copy. It's just in front of David's section and, um, I just figured if, if whoever prepared this was attending, we just drop back one page and have them go ahead and, and present. So do you want to speak a little bit about, about the work that you did here?
Yeah, I can talk about it for a few minutes, I guess. So basically I kind of did a little research on the issues of affordable housing and how most towns in Connecticut don't meet their requirement, which is ten percent. And I think we're maybe at two percent, I think. And due to the lack of affordable housing, we don't have enough young families in the school system and increases the cost for pupil, which is, I think, right now twenty-one thousand dollars. So by getting potentially affordable housing, we could maybe get more younger people to come here. And the cost per pupil will go down. It'll increase the tax base, provide more revenue for the town. And I like this part. It also helps for people to join commissions and volunteering for the, our recently formed Morris Fire Company. And yeah, and those are some of the goals that would help shape this. So if anyone has any questions, I'll take them.
So Tony, the only thing I would add is, um, if, uh, if we're going to utilize these numbers, we just want to verify that that is exactly where we stand. So does our, uh, housing stock that meets this criteria, is it at two percent? Is it, you know, is it defined? Do we know what it is? And then that twenty-one thousand, we would also want to make sure is, is accurate.
Yeah, of course.
Uh, I, I mean, Kevin may have some information on that. I'm, I'm sure, actually.
Yeah, I, I did ask Kevin for the cost per pupil. That's.
So we just want to make sure those numbers are, are, are up to date and verifiable. Um, we don't want to just plug in a guess. That, that's my only comment. I'm.
Oh, no, no, of course. Yeah, no, I'll get more accurate numbers, I guess. But I think, yeah, I'll have to ask Kevin, is that accurate for cost per pupil?
Not to the exact amount. Um, we, and, and once again, I agree with Bob. I think overall when, when, um, we're compiling this, um, it, it's really helpful. Um, and I have this experience in my academic work. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, it's really important to make sure we're compiling, um, the source data as you write your sections. So, um, you're creating notations for where, where the evidence for the numbers can come from. So let's say you use, uh, a document that's provided on, uh, the town website. Um, you, you would either use a web address or you would use the formal name for the document. Um, and you create notes, um, citations at the bottom of your section.
Sorry.
So we can read back to. So when we do the formal POCAD, um, I think one of the issues we had with the previous POCAD, and I see done in most of the professional POCAD, is they generally cite where they got their information from. Um, they may not go through the trouble necessarily of citing every single line like you might see in like a Chicago manual style citation. Um, however, by the end of the document, there's some sort of pathwork to finding and verifying the information. And one of the important aspects to this is if the document is really a revolving document, we're going to want to find updates to that information. And usually the sources have updates. And then the second aspect is that in, um, you know, two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen or nineteen or whatever, whenever we go to redo this, um, one of the problems we're having with this original POCAD is, um, it didn't cite any information. So we have information in it, but it's eas- it's more easy to, um, to re-author a new POCAD when you know where the previous POCAD's information came from. Uh, it, it, it'll essentially create a roadwork for the next commission on their, their re-authoring of this.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of did it more like, these are kind of my notes of, from the stuff I read. So, but yes.
So I, I completely understand. I, um, I, I, I don't, I don't expect, we can't expect everything to be cited right now. But what I would just advise is that if you do, if you do use a hard number or something that's factual, in your private notes, you, you create a citation. That way, when we get to the formal end for everybody, um, we're able to, uh, insert those, those citations, um, you know, to like a glossary style at the end at least.
Yep, yep.
Tony, thank you very much. I appreciate that you just picked this up and, and ran with it. And, uh, my comments certainly were not a, a criticism at all. It's just, uh, some, some, some guidance and.
Yeah, you're right.
Kevin had a, a great, uh, addition to that is, you know, the source data and updates will definitely facilitate uh, our future updates or revisions to this document. And, um, a- as we all know, um, I think a lot has changed in how people want to look at this data and research it. And I think that our new document should definitely provide that roadmap so that, um, you know, they, they can feel comfortable that we didn't just pull data from sources that, um, they can't look up themselves. And given the internet, you know, it's easy to do that today. So Kevin, thank you for tho- those comments. That's, I think that's a very important piece of whatever document we produce.
Yeah.
So, uh, will you scroll back a little bit? Keep going back, Tony?
All the way up.
Okay, so. Okay, so education and cultural resources.
Yeah, Bob, that's me. Um, one of the things I have done is, um, I with, I withheld making, um, uh, recommendations, um, because I not, I wasn't really sure if that was, uh, if we had decided on, on giving that role to each person yet. You know what I'm saying?
Understood.
So, um, I don't want to go so far to, I started compiling them but not sharing them. Um, so anyways, um, let me backtrack before, uh, I get into education and cultural resources. Above, I put a table of contents, um, a suggested table of contents and, um, potential subsections. And, um, I think that we should decide on a general table of content to at least beginning to give us a, a roadmap towards what areas we need to work on. Um, does anybody have any, um, any ideas on a, a more distinct table of contents? Or subsections that should be added to these areas?
Um, hang on.
I think it's pretty good.
Well, you have the town center, which I've put together. So that, to me, that's somewhere in between two. That's, that could fall into two, three, or four. It could be a segue between two and three.
Yeah, no, yeah, it would be a part of the subsection.
Could you make number five, say, conservation of natural resources and rural character?
Yeah, you could do that.
Because my section is the resources, but ours also the rural character.
Because there's no reason you can't do both. Is have economic development, and that's the whole point of it. You know, what you do, you come up with a plan for conservation and natural, of natural resources and, you know, maintain rural character. At the same time as you come up with an economic development plan, it's, those are supposed to go hand in hand. It's just that when we started doing this stuff back at the beginning of the century, um, we had a lot of people working on number five with a very, you know, focused approach, whereas what was happening with number three was never very focused and.
Right.
Very direct. And that's what we need to try to fill the gap on.
Yeah. So Kevin, for me, if you can just make number five, say, conservation of natural resources and rural character, I am good with the table of contents.
Yeah, the other thing we can do is we can make the rural character a full subsection of the conservation of natural resources. So regardless of how we title it, you would like, you want the rural character component to be put in the conservation section, correct?
Right. So what I did was I took my two sections was goal three and goal four from the, goal four from the original, which was water, natural resources, and then four was rural character. So they're kind of together.
Okay. Um, so, hey, you know, maybe because we, we were talking about this in, in financial terms and then the town centers. Um, Dave, would you like to, um, do you foresee the, um, town center being possible part within the economic development section?
Um, I, probably that's the most logical place where it goes. But it could go, you know, it does have ties to cultural resources too. But yeah, I think that's probably the best place to put it. Agreed.
And, um.
I don't want to lose sight of that aspect of it.
Absolutely. Um, uh, you know, I had another question, um, since we're on the topic of the sections, um, what, what with the loss of a few, um, a few members, commissioners, um, we should note what areas that we had assigned to people that now need to be, um, undertaken. One of them was housing.
Yeah, and, uh, so this is Bob Mack jump, jumping back in here and I, I, I actually had made a note for myself to pick that up on an old table of contents. So I, I don't know if that was just a thought that I had jotted down or if we actually discussed that. Um, but Tony recognized Kevin's leaving and, and apparently just jumped on it, uh, which I, I certainly appreciate. Can I just read down the, um, so the only other note that I had was David Wig for the town center, Route sixty-three, one oh nine, and two oh nine. Bob P. for economic development. Um, none, none of the others. Oh, and, and Veronica for protect water and natural resources. I didn't have anybody for rural character.
No, that was me too.
Yep. So, okay, I didn't have your name next to that. Um, in the original table of contents, there was infrastructure, sewers, roads, and community facilities and education. I, I know Kevin has taken up education.
Yeah, so, um, and it once again, anybody should share their opinion if you think differently. Um, one of the things that I, I thought to do, um, uh, particularly because, um, it gets sort of subsections of community aspect, but, um, I took the education on infrastructure and put it into its own section of education and cultural resources. Um, my understanding is, um, we may, um, the senior center, our senior activities should probably end up added to that, um, second section as well, the education and cultural resources.
So can I jump in here and, and Kevin, just hearing you speak, it, it appears that you have a very comprehensive view of this table of contents. And I'm just wondering if, if you put that in writing, if that might streamline this, we'll use that as the roadmap. We can quickly reass, you know, not reassigned, but fill in any gaps of people that were assigned things and, and have since left. And then use that table of contents as you've envisioned it as our roadmap? Or does anybody object to that? Because just hearing Kevin speak, he, I think he sees it in his mind if he doesn't already have it even, even more comprehensively written down than what we see in front of us right now.
Sure.
Is that, Kevin, are you comfortable with that?
I agree.
I am comfortable. And what I said is I, I think that if we decide on some of, some of this, then we should, uh, it should send us in, in a more distinct direction for finishing it.
I, I think it's a great idea. I think we were using a hacked up version of the previous table of contents, but, um, I don't think we all really were, were pleased with this arrangement. And that's kind of why I think you did what you did. I think you, you probably recognize that it didn't, you know, it wasn't a good document for us to move forward. Uh, now, I'm not knocking the old plan or, or Tom's work. I'm just saying we have some, some different things here that we want to include.
Well, that sounds good. I can definitely do that. I mean, one of the things I've been looking at is, um, other POCAD's for surrounding towns. And for the type of POCAD that we talked about wanting, um, one that was, was pretty concise and, um, pointed with its objectives. Um, generally what, uh, most of these POCAD's from other towns have done is, um, they've limited the table of contents to a very distinct four to six groups. And then they discuss the material within that, um, subject matter. Um, so that's where I got the idea from. Um, so if anybody thinks that their section belongs under a certain table of contents or that a table of contents should be broadened, uh, please let me know.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, Bob, uh, housing was, was Kevin Jerome's responsibility. That's begun, uh, to be focused on by yourself and Tony. And, um, my understanding is Lisa Harrison was going to be focusing on beach and rec. Um, I'm comfortable taking that because I've already started the educational and cultural resources section.
Okay.
Well, I, I certainly going to thank you there, Kevin. I appreciate, um, you know, I, I see the synergy. So I, you do too clearly. Thank you for just jumping on that.
Um, no problem. So going back to the, the education section, um, what I started doing was essentially putting together more of a factual, um, uh, a, a factual review of. together more of a factual, a factual review of the school system. But one of my big questions I have is, we, when we were going over Dave, David's section on town centers, was, he started to add recommendations. Are we making any recommendations within education? And I ask that because our previous PO-CAD pretty much didn't address education. As a commission, are we going to be considering recommendations in the education section?
Well, I, I think that if, if it's a, a plan, it's going to have to include recommendations. I don't know if, if the people disagree with that, but in my view, a plan would put forth ideas that should be implemented, yes?
And, and the idea is that we should work with the Board of Ed and say, this is what we're thinking about talking about. You know, this is what we've put together, this is what we are thinking of recommending. What are your takes, and where do you fit? Because things like, do we go for regionalization? Do we say we don't want regionalization? Those are things, those are recommendations that should be in this document. That's the whole point of this document, is you have a list of recommendations, and you have people who are, groups that are expected to act on these recommendations. And then, you know, technically, we should be tracking that, and we should be referring to this when we approve a major application. And if you don't have recommendations, you can't, I think it makes it more difficult. It's not just a inventory. It is a plan, and therefore, you've got goals and objectives. And those are your recommendations.
So, given that, just, just a comment on, on that, David. Given that we don't control how we would regionalize, or, you know, what would happen as far as a school district, if, if we have a recommendation in, in education, I, I think that it should just also define what we think implementation of those suggestions would glean.
Yeah, so, in my, when I met with the Board of Education members, I met with the three of them, and I explained, you know, what the PO-CAD's purpose was. They were very cautious about them wanting to go on the record suggesting regionalization or non-regionalization, okay?
Yeah.
And, you know, so, I don't want to get into the psychology of why, you know, it was important to them. They, they more wanted to share a synopsis of what's going on currently, and share some of the positive things that they believe that the, you know, our education has moved forward with, you know, things like the, the Ag Science Program, et cetera, student performance levels. But they were very cautious about wanting to have any input on regionalization. So I just want to be very clear about that. But I agree with you, Bob. I do think because it's the town plan, there should be some sort of plan on whether we're suggesting regionalization. It changes infrastructure on schools, it changes tax dollars, it changes the makeup of our community, for desires for affordable housing, et cetera. And I, I agree that we should be making, I didn't personally want to put one out there without discussing whether that was our plan or not, to make sure we put that in there. But we should be aware that when we do create a plan, there's a chance that the, the three Board of Education members may choose not to weigh in on that.
Understood.
Well, I mean, and the public would have to approve anything we want to put in this anyway at a public meeting, right?
Uh, yeah.
This, go on.
The, the plan has to be heard at some point.
Right.
Now, but, but given all that, we adopt the plan. So even if we, we got some pushback, if the commission really felt strongly about what should be in it, you know, they could include things. I mean, you're going to get pushback from some portion of the community on, on any subject, or disagreement, I should say, if not pushback. So, we ultimately have the responsibility of adopting a plan, and there may be sections of the plan that not everybody agrees with. That's just the nature of things, so, but yes.
Before I move forward on, uh, writing down the recommendation portion of the education, it's my view that, my personal view, that we should be considering merging our secondary education with Litchfield, and attempting to keep our elementary school in town. But before I go and write that up and, and take the time, is there disagreement among the commission for that recommendation?
No, I, I think that's a fine idea.
You know what I think, Kevin?
I'm on board.
I think you put it out there, and you, and you put out its merits, and don't worry about what other commissioners say.
No, I just, it wasn't, I, I'm just judging if there would be a, a large disagreement on it before I took the time.
Oh, yeah. I wouldn't speak to it personally, because it, it really doesn't affect me. I mean, it might, obviously, dollars do, but I don't have any children, you know, in the system. I wouldn't want to stymie your speaking if you felt strongly about something. I think you should put it out there and, and say why you think it's that, it should be that way, and, and let's, you know, let's put it, let's, let's have a conversation about it. I wouldn't worry about what I think about it, or Bob, or anybody. Let's just, let's hear what you've got to say.
But, in support of your argument, Kevin, I feel very strongly that this is a direction we may be forced into, and it's better that we pursue it and maybe have some control over the result, rather than have a result dictated to us.
Right.
That's my viewpoint on it.
Well, I'll just speak to David's point. I think that's exactly what the state kind of told the small towns, you know, in the last year or two. If we don't do something about it, something will be done on our behalf. I mean, that's, that's the tone that I felt coming from Hartford.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
So I, I, that's why I encourage people with ideas to put them out there. I'm not really thinking about this anymore. So I'm, I'm not going to say, no, don't put it in there, Kevin, you know, listen, that's crazy, I won't, I won't do that.
All right, sounds good. I will complete the recommendation portions of my section, and add the, the beach and rec to that area as well, for next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. Can you scroll down, Tony?
Sure can. Kevin, did you want to go over some of this stuff, or?
No, there's, it's all
Yeah, pretty much for itself, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't put every single thing, I don't think Kevin put, that he sent me, but I did put the charts, I thought the charts were important. Sorry, I'm going to
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward. This is just an introduction summary of our school district.
Okay, cool.
Very good.
All right, Tony, keep going, if you would. Keep going. Okay, this is where my document actually starts. So I, I beg your pardon for not having this, the online version printed. So, Bob, this is, this is what you've put together thus far?
Well, this is the, this is the last two pages. Tony, scroll in the other direction, see if you can start from the beginning.
See, no, that's not it. One second, I think I went too far.
Yeah, you're in reflection.
You know, Bob, maybe I just put these four things.
Okay, so that, and, and getting, talking about recommendations, that's exactly what these last two pages are.
Yeah, I don't think I put the goals, but I was supposed to put them, sorry.
Okay. I'm just going to put a note that there, this, there's more EDC precedes this section. And Tony, will you update this document as quickly as you can?
Sure.
And let's get it to wherever it needs to be, because I expect we're going to just do a couple more special meetings in, in, kind of, for lack of a better term, rapid fire?
Yep.
To get caught up because of the lost time. Does that sound right, everybody?
Sure.
Let's do it. With, with the lack of travel, a lot of us are going to have time that we don't have these days, because a lot of us travel, so let's just do it while we can.
Right. Tony, if you want me to send this to you again, I will.
Yeah, sure, if you don't mind.
There are two pages, and those first two pages is where I modified and removed any items that I felt were no longer relevant, and I added all those items which I felt were important to the town of Morris going into the future. So, this, again, are a bunch of recommendations. I need those first two pages to make, for, to make any sense to anybody, so.
Yeah, and Bob, I'm not going to have you spend any time, you know, trying to make sense of it without those documents, because really, the, the criteria set forth by Steve Byrne was, those documents have to be available for you to talk about them, and I just wouldn't want you to have to refer to something that's not here available.
Right.
Something that, that
Bob, are they on your computer?
Yeah, we're here.
We're here.
Thought I lost you.
I think, Tony, we should
I'm going to run out of data on my phone if I disappear all of a sudden, that'll be what happens.
Maybe we should move on to Veronica's section then, because that one
Yeah, that's, that's what we'll do, Bob. Thank, we're sorry.
Yeah, that's true.
But I think we'll just, we'll set up another special meeting.
Yeah, I'll run, I'll run through this really quickly the next, not a problem.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, after economic development, I see a document that it, that appears that Veronica put together?
Well, what I did was, I basically retyped the entire section. I mean, I read through the whole thing like five times, and they had such good information, I tried to verify most of it. Like the stuff in red, I called White Memorial, talked to them, I got their number of acres and read their 2,068. I talked to Ben at the Morris Land Trust, they own 39 acres now, they have conservation easements on 132. I confirmed the Waterberry Water Company land, per the Morris Land Records I found on the Morris website. I was not able to confirm the 490 farmland. I emailed the assessor but never heard back. So I went through, I talked to Connie, I added things. See, and here, it's not in color, you didn't keep the color tone when I went over from Google Doc.
I think when I converted it, it didn't do, but if you look lower down a little bit, some of it's colored, but
You know, like Conservation Commission and Land Trust doesn't exist. I just wanted to, you to see what, the green stuff is what I was going to take out, the red stuff is what I was going to insert.
Yeah, I remember, it's on the Google Doc, but maybe next time I can fix that and change the colors.
And then, you know, I, a lot of it, I, I did learn a lot of stuff that Bantam Lake Protective, on page six of my section, you know, there was stuff that they had as active recommendations that have been acted on, but not by the town, but by Bantam Lake Protective. So that's why I put, they currently provide all these things that were recommendations from the plan. I had talked to Connie, and she totally recommended creating the Bantam Lake and calling it the waterfront overlay district. Getting to the low-impact development, I also, you know, there's still a lot of information in there, but a reference, the most important thing, which is now the LASD, we can, you know, send people to and build. And then, keeping in the objective of farming and farmers, because that kind of goes along with what we want to do with the economic development, which is to do it with the farmers and keep it rural. And I learned, we are a giant sponge, basically, for all these watersheds. Waterberry depends on us, Sheepog depends on us, so everything we do on our land here affects everybody's water.
You know what goes downhill?
Yeah, what, what goes, you know, in the water goes downhill and goes into the reservoirs, and we really have to, you know, they had recommendations to basically educate the public who lives in the watershed, which is basically the whole town. I put a suggestion in somewhere that we should be doing a mailing with deep to people about putting stuff on their lawns. Connie has some of that information. Now, the part that I'm having trouble with is, so, I know how much Kevin doesn't want the five-acre zoning thing in there, but I'm leaving it in to bring it up for discussion again, because we still have to, I don't know, Bob, if you guys were able to get a overlay soil map yet, or, you know, my suggestion is, we need to redo the zoning map according to the soils map.
Veronica, I just want to say one thing. When you talk about minimal acreage size, you're talking about it being 80,000 or four acre in the water overlay zone, right? Not in the whole town, right?
Well, that's up for discussion. That's why I said, we need to get the soil map, you know, you can have smaller zoning, maybe, in places that would allow for it, but right now, what we have going is, we have, the big lots are where it's good for septic and water, and you have the smaller lots where it's not good for septic.
Exactly. I'm glad somebody recognizes that, because that's always been an issue.
Oh, no, no, I recognize, I was just saying in terms of
And
You know, about the water overlay zone currently.
The state recommends in the watershed that you don't go below two-acre lots.
Okay.
So, you know
Yeah, so what Veronica is saying is, she's left in the original recommendation, as it was worded in the PO-CAD
Yep.
to ensure that we, we, you know, consider it, and either amend it appropriately, based on our discussions and input from the community, or, or scrap it.
Right.
Right.
But I think we should seriously get the zoning map and the soil map and look at it, and see if we can redo the zoning, you know, as one of the recommendations, that's what I put in, is a recommendation to redo our zoning map. The other thing I didn't know what to do with was the part about the population density and this build-out section. So I copied it exactly as it was, and I made a notation that it needed updated numbers and lots of input, because I had no idea where to get this information.
We, we can help you with that, we can get the build-out information from the building official. There's a spreadsheet.
Yeah, it said that the Planning and Zoning Commission had a detailed study of the potential build-out done, so I don't know if we need to do a new study?
That's the Harrell, that's the Harrell Nikolowski study. Maybe, can, does anybody have a copy? I know I left a couple of copies of that with people.
I, I have
Can we get a copy of that to Veronica?
So Veronica, just the synopsis of that study was, those gentlemen took, did a review of all of the available lots, and what
Right.
the build-out potential was of those lots, and they, they quantified it and provided it to us in a report. What I was suggesting is that we could update it by examining the data from the building official to identify the new construction since that study was conducted.
Okay.
And, obviously, change the numbers appropriately based on what lots were vacant and have now been built out.
Right, that's
Just to be candid in knowing what has gone on since the PO-CAD was put together, and that study was put together, there was a, you know, just a little bit of time after the study that we had a strong economy, and then
Yeah.
we had one that went away.
I mean, it may be not much different than the one that we have, so.
It, it won't, it, it's not going to change dramatically.
Right.
The, the potential build-out numbers will still be similar. The, the potential build-out numbers will still be similar. Um, I, what I can say is, the concern about how rapidly it will be built out is much different today than it was ten years ago.
Yes.
We were very concerned when we put, when, when we had the study done, slash, discussed the POCAD at that time, we were very concerned that we would have, you know, the opposite problem to today that we do have, which is, you know, schools were empty. Now, Harold Nicolowski was clear that we were, regardless of the development that was going on at the time, we were trending down in school, uh, enrollment.
Right.
But the, the feeling in town, among commissioners at least, was that we were gonna have a huge influx at some point, and, um, you know, that, that just didn't come to pass, but anyway, the, the information will not be difficult to amend.
Yeah, so this kind of ties to my recommendation of redoing the entire zoning map according to how the soils are, and, um, I think you guys said you will be able to get that information from, um, Torrington Health, maybe? Actually, I have that re- resource, um, natural cultural resource thing, and there's a map in there of soils. But I don't have a copy of the actual zoning map, so Tony, can you email one to me?
Sure, I'll find it on the computer and send it over.
Okay, cuz I can't find it anywhere on a website anymore.
Did you look, maybe if it's in the, you look on the planning zoning or agendas, if you go scroll on the.
I looked everywhere and I could not find a copy.
Cuz if you look all the way at the bottom of it, it has the old town plan of conservation and development.
But I never saw an actual map where it said R forty, R sixty, R eighty.
Oh, okay.
I have that, um.
Veronica.
Uh, you can go, Bob.
I, I, I think I have a, uh, a ten by fourteen that I can, that I can scan and send to everybody if that's convenient.
That's, well, ten by fourteen, I can't print bigger than eight and a half by eleven.
But if it's electronic, you can.
Could you copy one, Tony, when you go into the office and put it in my mailbox for me?
Sure.
Okay.
Regardless, it would be nice to have what you suggested, Bob.
Yeah, I'll send it out, Veronica, I'll print it out for you in that... I'm sorry, did I say ten by four, I think eleven by seventeen I can print it out, too. It's a little bit easier to read when it's in that.
Okay, yeah, if you can print me a big one, somebody throw it in my mailbox so I can pick it up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that done, that's, that's no problem.
Thank you.
By the way, on a note of Veronica's recommendation to keep the five-acre zoning, Roxbury had retained its, uh, six-acre zoning. Um, a caveat to how much road space you had, um, but it maxed out at six acres. And, um, in two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, they had seventy-one children in sixth grades at their elementary school. So, um, one of the thoughts we should think about very clearly is, we have neighbors who retained, um, uh, and, and worked on keeping uh, high lot sizes, and their communities are struggling in, for their elementary schools in even more significant ways than we are right now.
All right, how about if I, I put it as to five-acre minimum in the zones where it makes no sense to build, cuz the septic is gonna be no good?
Could I jump in real quickly? I, I just don't want there to be any confusion. As I read the old plan and Veronica's updates, I'm looking at an eighty thousand square foot minimum lot size, that's two acre, not five, am I missing something?
There's an eighty, eight thou, eighty thou, minimum lot size, which is two acre, and then there is a, I think it said four acre maximum lots, um, otherwise, I thought, but maybe I misread it.
Oh.
Maybe it is.
Hang on, one second.
I'll quickly read it, it says, "Action Recommendation: Establish an eighty thousand, eighty thousand square foot minimum lot size in Morris with the requirement that the minimum lot area cannot include inland wetlands, watercourses, and steep slopes," and it goes into some details. And then it said, "Protect existing residential lot owners, and making a change to R eighty existing lot owners in the R sixty, R forty zones must be protected." So, uh, understand, this would only affect new subdivisions. If there is a lot of record on our tax rolls, it stays.
Correct, exactly.
Yeah, do not sizes, yeah.
Okay. Got it.
And, I mean, if you want those electronic copies of those maps, I zipped up the inventory, Natural Resources Inventory folder on my machine. I believe I'm the source of, I was pretty much the final source of all, all of that, and it's about fourteen. Almost fifteen gigabytes. I mean, megabytes.
I have the hard.
No, actually, it's only fourteen megabytes, but that might be a little large for emails for some people, but if you want me to try to email that out?
Yes, David. You have a zip file of fourteen megabytes.
Yeah, fourteen point three one one, it's, I have it all electronic.
Most emails have a maximum of, of give or take twenty megabytes.
Okay. I'll try to send that out.
Send it out, and, and for whoever can't download it, we'll get it on a thumb drive and, and hand it out.
Okay, I have a hard copy of it, so I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
All right, so basically, that's my section, gentlemen.
You did a good job, by the way.
Well, I didn't do much, much, I read through the whole thing, tried to update the information that needed updating and think about things, and added a couple things, but.
You, you did it all, then?
No.
There's nothing wrong with that, that's, that's the way to do it, it's like.
Say, isn't that exactly the, that's the job, right?
Yes.
Oh, there's one other comment.
I was exhausted when I was done.
There's one comment I wanna make, do we want to consider and put down anything for like cluster housing? So we do say a minimum lot size of, you know, two acres and maximum, but if we, do we wanna add the option for cluster housing where you could build a traditional neighborhood with smaller lots, and that would be a accepted waiver for, um.
Think it says something in here about that, David, um.
Oh, I thought it was already.
I'm pretty sure, let me make a note, and I will, hang on, I got so many freaking pieces of paper with all my work crap all over here. Okay, David wants to know about cluster housing, all right, it, it is in here somewhere, I think, I gotta find it.
Okay, cuz I, I think that's, you know, if you're gonna do what we're proposing there, at least that allows a, um, way to facilitate more affordable housing and still protect rural character and hat, you know, and attract people who want a traditional neighborhood.
Correct, hang on, I'm still looking for it, well, you guys keep talking, I'll keep looking.
No problem, I, yeah, I don't need to, to find it this second, I'm just saying that, that's the only thought I have that we may wanna consider as a vehicle here.
Well, one of the things that I've always used as, uh, a met, a guide for that development in town is that platform north Terrell, um, it, uh, section where that farmland was turned into houses. Um, some of those lot sizes are, are smaller, but we, people in town have generally agreed that that was, um, a development project that that was done well, I, I think. Um, at least that's my experience, but anyways, those lot sizes are, they jump from one and a half acres to, to, um, you know, six acres at certain times, but, um, quite a few of them don't exceed the two acres or the one point eight nine, whatever the eighty thousand is exactly, um, but it, it's a, um, I think it's a, uh, a development project that was done well.
Yep. And you know what else is in my section? Docks and float!
We'll give you more time next time, Veronica.
Okay.
Um, so, so, okay, um, bear with me one second. All right, so, I, I have, um, unfortunately, I've, I went back to ink and pen, and I have, uh, been working on the introduction section, um, all the way up to the assessment of, of the conditions and trends. So basically, that introduction section, I have a new version of it that I'd like to, I'd be, I'd be the first presenter in our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Can we take a, a quick minute, I, I'll, I'll type this, obviously, but could we take a quick minute and discuss, um, when would we do our next special meeting? Does anybody, I, I mean, it, we're all kind of, I think we're all pretty much, I'm not stuck at home so much, but I, I have more time now than I think I've ever had. Um, I'm a little anxious, folks, because somewhere around June first, uh, life begins in New Jersey for me.
Mm-hmm.
And I, it's gonna be extremely difficult for me to, um, well, I mean, with Zoom, it'll be doable, but I don't know how long people wanna use this method. Um, I certainly don't wanna chair meetings, uh, from a state away, but in any event, can we have a, set up a couple of these special meetings to plow?
What about next Monday or Wednesday?
Should we just, I, I suggest we just do the next two Wednesdays in a row?
Okay.
Two Wednesdays in a row.
No, we just have one meeting every week, and then.
Yes.
And then it'll have.
Whatever day.
And then we'll have a regular meeting on the sixth.
I, I think if we do those next two Wednesdays, we're gonna be in a really good spot to start getting input, uh, from the community, and then on, on what we've drafted, and, you know, push forward pretty, pretty, pretty quickly.
So, Bob, because of the COVID thing, um, do you think, once we get to the point where we need the public input, that we should post the proposed document on the town website, and then maybe post a survey? Because how are we gonna have a town meeting and have six feet of distance and?
That, I think that we are gonna have to take up the cog on their survey app.
Oh, that's right, she did offer that, that would be good, yes.
Um, I, I think it's good because, I mean, I think they'll, they'll, you know, recognize that we're including them in the process. I know we're trying to do as much of this as we can ourselves, but I, I think that the survey, um, I think a lot of people expect it to come out in that format.
Yeah.
Thing I worry about a little bit is are we going to, uh, alienate some folks in town that may not, you know?
Well, how about if we also put something in the newspaper and tell people you can access it that way, and that if they don't have access to the internet, they can call Planning and Zoning, and we can print a hard copy and send it to them?
I, I think we're gonna need to do that, because I, I'm pretty sure that there are folks in town that are not gonna be keen on a, on a survey monkey type approach, you know?
Right.
And I don't want them to be alienated into the process, so I think it's simple as that. We just print out a hard copy of the survey, and, uh, they can pick it up, or we can mail it out.
Mail it, yeah.
Yeah, mail it out, and, um, you know, have them participate that way, so I think we should plan on going, going forward that way.
All right, I agree.
Yeah, that second Wednesday special meeting.
Okay. And now, Bob, do you want me to contact Johnsonlin, or will you do that?
Yeah, I think, if, do you wanna do that, Tony, and then just, just mention our concern about alienating folks that might not do the electronic thing?
Yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll email her tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, they may have a service that prints them and mails them or whatever, they may already have thought of that.
All right, I can do that, sounds good.
If somebody just wanted to give me a few copies, I'd be happy to be the mailer, I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, I mean, technically, Veronica, on days I work, I can literally go around and.
Okay.
Drop it off, too, that's also a possibility.
Yeah, if you need help with that, Tony, I'd be happy to help you.
All right, sounds good.
Right.
I can't believe I figured this out, I'm so excited!
I love Veronica. All right, it, if, if it pleases the commission, I'd like to move on to the next, um, item on the agenda, four C membership.
Okay.
Do it.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Bob, what is customfurniture@hotmail.com or built@customfurniture and design, what's better for you?
Built at.
Email. Built at.
Yeah.
Cool.
Any longer.
Won't go anywhere, okay, I'll get that out of the list, off the list, thank you.
Okay, um, so as we discussed earlier in the meeting, uh, we have had some resignations from the commission. We're fortunate to have a couple of, uh, former members, uh, interested in, in jumping back in. Um, I'm going to quickly turn over the, the meeting to, uh, these folks. Uh, ladies first, Eileen, do you just wanna say a, a quick few words? Um, I, I'll just preface her comments by, uh, Eileen was a member, she did not resign or leave. Um, apparently, there was some miscommunication about, um, some obligations she needed to get on the ballot, whether it be signing a document or visiting the clerk, um, so I just, uh, I just wanted that known, um, that, you know, it wasn't like Eileen abandoned us, um, she, she just, she wasn't re-elected because she wasn't on the ballot, so.
And I can speak to that, she was put on, we attempted to put her on the ballot, and the Democrats did, and, um, but she didn't, she was out of town, and there was no time for her to turn things around and actually sign what she needed to sign to make it happen.
Okay.
It wasn't through a lack of, uh, desire or apathy or anything.
Excellent, thank you, David.
Thanks, Bob and Dave, I appreciate that. Hello, everyone, hi, it's nice to see everybody. Um, good to see you, Ronnie, how you doing?
Pretty good.
Good, um, you guys have done tremendous work on the POCAD since the last time I've been able to attend a meeting, so I wanna say kudos to everyone, uh, and I would definitely be more than happy to become a full-fledged member of the commission once again, if that is a possibility. Um, I really did enjoy my time on the commission, and especially with the ability for Zoom meetings. If I am traveling for work, which I end up having to do many times on a Monday, um, I would be able to still call in um, or video in and participate, so that would make it so that I'd be able to even be more of a participant, uh, and I wouldn't have to worry about being an alternate, I could be a full-fledged member if possible.
All right, thank you for, um, reintroducing us to you, Eileen, good to see you again.
You too, Bob.
Through the glass, right?
Yeah.
You look good, kid.
Thank you, thank you, I, I do what I can.
Uh, so, okay, so I'm noticing something here, just the Zoom detail. Now that Tony has put away the document, it, it appears that, uh, the screens kind of shift around to the speakers, is that how this works?
Yes.
Looks like.
Yeah.
Or you can, if you put your, um, cursor at the top, you can change the view so that you can see tiles of everyone, if you prefer, as opposed to it just being one person.
I see that little.
Okay, yeah, I just noticed.
Awesome.
I use Zoom for work all the time, that's the only reason why I know this.
Well, I see this little thing, it says participants on my phone, is that it? Hit participants?
On the app, it might be different, you might only be able to see whoever's speaking.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, if you call in from, if you did the call-in from the phone, it'd be a separate, that's why it's different.
Yeah, the computer's.
Cuz it gives you a choice whether to do through the app or through your phone.
Yep, and you can also call, and you don't have to, you know.
Correct, right.
Eileen, thank you for the, uh, little tutorial there, I appreciate that, I, I find that this easier to follow, thank you.
Absolutely, Bob, no problem.
Um, we also have Dave Jeremiah Jr. with us.
Hey, guys, how are you?
Hi, David.
Nice to see everybody, nice to have you put, uh, participants on, and, uh, I was talking to everybody else earlier, I wouldn't mind coming back on as an alternate. Um, and, uh, it looks like you guys have been doing a great job in town, I appreciate everything. And, uh, it looks like you guys have been doing a great job in town. I appreciate everything you've been doing.
Thank you.
Good to see you again, Dave, and thank you for, uh, your interest. Um, we, you know, we had a good run on the membership role, but, uh, people were spread thin. A number of members are serving on different commissions and, you know, they got, now many of them are teaching their kids at home, so that...
Oh, God, I don't want to do that.
Taking time for a planning and zoning meeting isn't on the top of their list after they've been teaching algebra during the day, so.
Oh, I, I would have to...
Yeah, and you can't carry the one anymore, so.
Yeah, we have no...
So it, is, by my count, we have a regular member opening and two alternate openings. Is that math ring true to you, Tony?
That's exactly what it is, yep.
And we're fortunate enough this evening to, uh, have, uh, two individuals, one to occupy a regular member seat and one for an alternate seat. So we don't even have a battle this evening over who gets what. They, we kind of make everybody happy.
But being an alternate on this board, if you're there, your odds are you're gonna be participating anyway, so there is no shame in being an alternate.
Good. It's really good, so if somebody can't make it, they can attend the meeting, no matter how.
Uh, we'll just discuss that a little further as we, um, learn a little bit about this in our next two special meetings, right? We might, we might get some real full participation going forward.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, if Eileen wants to be involved, but she has to travel, this is a perfect venue for her to, you know, sit in her hotel room and be in on the meeting.
Yeah, then we'll just need the proper infrastructure in the, in the, um, community room or the, uh, other conference room to make sure we've got good signals and, you know, we could have a group there and have participants remote and, and, you know.
Yeah, because what happens in the fall is I end up having to travel many times doing odds and risk assessments through New England, so I've called in a couple of times, but especially through Zoom, this is great because I can see the documents that you guys are talking about and, um, I feel a lot more, um, like I'm part, a participant, so.
And we can see when you really don't like something because you're gonna see the faces, right?
Exactly, exactly.
And it's recorded, so.
That's, that's, that does save us, um, a lot of hassle too, losing recordings or whatever. We know they're, you know, it's kind of automated, so. I'm kind of excited about it. I, I think it'll work well.
I'm excited. I can't believe I figured it out.
I, I think it... I think it gives me an opportunity to fully participate while, because I'm expecting to be away quite a bit over the next year and a half.
Now, wait a minute. New Jersey? I thought you said Florida.
Well, this, I mean, I don't want to go deep into the details, but this lent itself more to me. I still have a child in middle school. Go to, to establish. My business in Florida was really a reach. I mean, it, it was just gonna be, for a while, I thought it was really gonna be, you know, kind of the only opportunity I had.
Yeah.
This came up. It's in the middle of a good negotiation right now. We're about to sign off on it.
Oh, good for you.
Yeah, and they, they've lost two months, which makes me a little anxious. I think it's gonna be very aggressive in June and July. But New Jersey's a lot closer than Florida. It allows me to, you know, be home regularly.
Yeah, you can easily drive home from New Jersey whenever you need to.
Spend a lot of money to commute, so.
Yeah.
She gets to finish school where she wants, everything that works out.
So.
Good for you.
Uh, do, if, I don't believe there are any other participants in the meeting. I'm looking at the, uh, tiles now, um, that would be interested in, uh, filling a vacant seat. So, um, you know, do we want to entertain a motion to appoint?
I think we should.
I'm more than happy to move to appoint David, I mean, Eileen Narboudis as a full member, filling the open seat for a full member. And then I'll, I guess we probably should do it in separate motions, just do one at a time.
Let's do that, David. I agree.
Alright, I'd be happy to second that motion.
Good. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, yeah, well, we'll just say it's unanimous, so we don't have to do a roll call.
I agree, I don't think...
Yay!
Yay, welcome back!
I'd like to move to appoint David Jeremiah to an alternate position. Whichever that's appropriate based on the town clerk to put him in, because I think they're all, all three are open.
I'd be happy to sit in that one as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Again, I think it's unanimous.
So, yeah, David...
Excited to have some old friends back.
Yay, welcome, David.
Congratulations and welcome. Uh, I do agree with David's assessment that we should just allow the clerk to select the appropriate slot, alternate role for David to fill. Um, there are requirements that she, maybe we don't even want to understand. I certainly don't. So we'll just let her fill it appropriately and, uh, Tony, will you get that information to, uh, the clerk and ask for an updated roster, please?
Sure. Also, I recommend Dave and Eileen go to the town clerk as soon as possible.
Great, because we have to be sworn in, correct, again?
Yes.
Alright, so we'll call, you'll have to make an appointment, I'm sure, because there's, they're, um, doing, not very many people in the office.
You probably have to wear a mask. The governor just said today, if you're at the grocery store and he puts something over your nose and mouth.
They'll give you the protocol, whatever it might be.
Yeah, I'll give them a call tomorrow and find out what I should do. Well, thank you, everybody. I'm so happy to be back. Yay!
Welcome. Alright, so that, by my count, would leave us one alternate position to fill.
Right, because Katie's still an alternate, right?
That's correct. Katie still serves.
Oh, that's...
With the Zoom technology, we might get, um, her to participate more regularly, so, um, it might count really well.
Everybody has mail.
Thank you, David.
That is if you can receive a, that, that zip file and you gotta be able to, you know, it's just something you should be able to open up in File Explorer and see all the pieces to it. It's...
Were you able to send it to me too, Dave?
I have an email address for you, yes.
Oh, I got it. You're the best.
Thank you.
I would have, I, I dug up Bob's job shop for you, Veronica. Is that good?
Veronica, job shop, yeah, that works.
Okay, so the, of items in, in wrapping up this evening, um, I received via email from the engineer Ken Hurica, uh, at 22 Island Trail, an updated site plan that they want us to consider. I, I don't want to discuss it this evening. I just want everybody to know that I'm going to distribute all of those new documents to all of you electronically.
Okay.
Please not start, uh, an email chain that discusses the particulars. What is gonna happen is inland wetland will review it, make recommendations or decisions, and if, if in fact it's approved there, it'll come to us and then we'll act on it at that time.
Okay.
But I, given that, you know, we can't face-to-face, you can't touch documents and exchange them, I'm just gonna send them to everybody. You can create a list of questions that, uh, will be presented to the engineer. We still haven't figured out when, uh, he might actually present it and if it would be in a Zoom format, but I made him aware that that might be the case. Um, we do have extended timelines from the governor on processing these things. We're under no pressure to, you know, scramble to approve something here. We've got plenty of time to deal with it, okay? Um, and, and it's really in inland wetlands court first anyway, okay? Uh, I, I, I think that's really all. I, I just wanted to make you aware so you didn't, uh, see the document and start...
It'll be on next week's agenda, or no? We're just doing POCAD next week.
We're just gonna stick to POCAD on, on the special meetings.
I guess I would like to make sure we talk about a couple of things. We have summer starting, so therefore, outdoor sales at Dollar General will have started.
Yeah, I sent some pictures about that last week.
I did too. We're...
We're right here, Dave. We're right here.
And, um, the, um, I did send some photos off. Didn't I send some photo? And we even looked at, uh, the junk area around Anderson Farm. Can we put a couple of those on the agenda, have a quick discussion and get a status of those? I don't want to do it here. I just want to ask that question. Because this technically is under, falls under agenda review. We can't add it to this agenda, but we can add that to a new agenda for the next meeting.
We certainly can, and, uh, there are updates on both of those items and one more, uh, regarding, uh, um, Route 209 West Shore Seafood, so.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
Those are all on the...
Can we add that to the, can we please add those to the agenda and anything else you think of afterwards that might be?
I can add, but I mean, I did add a section in the agenda that says ZO update, as you guys...
Is that for the next regular meeting or for our special meeting?
For our next special meeting.
Special next week.
And I think we should be all on the same page on these items. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but if we could spend, you know, more than five minutes on each subject, we could get through it.
That allows you to go anywhere.
That'll actually allow us to, to get a call out to the, um, Anderson Road folks because, uh, they were taking action on their own with their tenant over there, so.
Okay.
We'll get the full update for next Wednesday on all of those items and, uh, I think there's some, some positive news for at least two of them.
Also, is there anything that I can do for the... Sorry, Dave.
Go on.
Is there anything I can do to help with the POCAD between now and Wednesday? Um, because I know that there were certain sections that were divvied out. Is there anything that I can take off of someone's plate to help with?
Um, Tony, do you, would you like to work with Eileen on housing?
Whatever you guys want, that's fine.
I, I mean, you, you seem, uh, interested in, in doing...
I am a little bit. I've been researching. She can, she can help. Sure, of course.
I, I'll stick to the introduction and you and Tony can collaborate on the housing.
Sounds good.
Beautiful.
Alright.
I won't step on your toes, Tony, I promise.
No big deal. Um, Bob, should we discuss, um, chairman, vice chairman or?
Well, I definitely, um, I've been heated with the commission about my ability to be near home and I, I don't know that, um, I'm comfortable doing the job while being away for weeks at a time. So, uh, on the next agenda, could we consider electing officers?
Sure.
Sounds like a good idea. Really don't want you to leave as chairman, Bob, but...
Well, I mean, I'm not leaving the commission. I just don't feel that I can, I can do the job, particularly at, at an important time with the POCAD and...
Yeah, you got a lot going on. I understand.
There's some anxiety. It's a, it's a very large project and I, it's gonna consume me and I don't want to shortchange you guys.
No, it's not fair to you for us to ask you to, so.
Yeah.
You gotta consider your family and what's best for you.
Yeah, I, I know what I'll default to and it, and unfortunately, it won't be helping you guys.
And it shouldn't be.
Yeah, it just, I can't...
Families first, all the time.
Consideration there. It's, um, it's right for the town too, so.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll, we'll add those items to next Wednesday's agenda?
Sure, that's fine. I can do that.
Seven o'clock Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, perfect.
We'll try to be on time next time. I had a few glitches, but I got it.
Well, hopefully you have internet by then.
Oh, God. I, I swear to God, they're getting a D from me. How could you come, put the big wire up and then not come through? I'm wondering, do you think it's because the guys that take the wire from the pole to your house are contractors?
They're different technicians, yeah. Different people.
Yes.
I'm like, I couldn't believe, you should have seen every source and they had those guys with the, begins with an A.
And they're quick.
Aspen.
Whatever. They, what, what a coordination. The guys were digging the hole and once they were done with the first call, I mean, it was what coordination amongst all of them? It was amazing.
Well, the pictures I saw, it was pretty, um, epic, the, um, trees and everything that came down on your road.
Oh, it was, I, yeah. The guy said they were very old poles. One of them, the one across the street from my house was so old, the, like, the insulator on top of it. He's like, God, I haven't seen one of these in ages.
Oh, we're glad you're, you're past it all.
I'm just glad to have, uh, water and, uh, septic. That's, that's good for me.
That's the most important thing.
Well, yeah.
Alright, if, uh, if that's it, uh, we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Bob's making the motion?
Yes.
I second.
I'll second it, Tom.
Alright, I got it, 8:51.
Aye.
Well, thank you guys again for letting me back in. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank, thank you for your service.
Welcome back and thank you for your service. I agree.
And I'll see you guys next Wednesday. Yay!
Bob, if you want to turn off the, or I'll turn off the recording, alright?